Thank you Superintendent Simic. Just want a quick update on our scheduling process. At this point, we are having some great discussions with the LFEA. As part of this process, we learned that we really needed to get them more involved, not only to create buy-in, but just to make sure that we're playing within the lines in terms of any contractual obligations. Again, I do want to reiterate, we have really positive conversations. At this point, we have about ten draft schedules that we're looking at with the LFEA. Over the next couple of weeks, we're hoping to expand those ideas. We may pare those ideas down a little bit more, but within the next couple of weeks, we're looking forward to sharing those ideas with our education committee, with the Board of Education, with some of our parent-focused groups, and continuing on. One of the great people on our committee is our student council president, Kate Wally. And so Kate actually is here to not really talk about that, but talk about all the great things that are happening at Lake Forest right now. And this really is an exciting time. It's exciting also to look up and say, wow, it's almost winter break, and think of all the great things that have happened so far. But lots of great things happening in all realms of the school, so no further ado. I'd like to turn it over to Kate.
Just a few updates from the high school. Human Rights Club celebrated International Human Rights Day by hosting Jam for Justice, a concert held in the Commons last Friday during all lunch periods. Student performers of all grades showed off their musical talent to raise awareness about human rights and help fundraise for an orphanage in Kenya. The band orchestra and chorus are gearing up and practicing for the annual holiday concerts and spaghetti dinner. All funds raised go directly to support the music program. Several clubs and homeroom classes participated in the adoptive family program for the holiday season. Students fundraised with bake sales and pizza sales and were able to purchase gifts for and clothing for children. And the fashion merchandising class will put on a fashion show this Thursday in the library showcasing the latest trends from local stores on junior and senior models. And lastly, next week will be a holiday-themed spirit week with the countdown to winter break. The days have not been totally approved yet, but will probably include pajamas and ugly Christmas sweaters. The library also challenges all third-period homerooms to get into the holiday spirit by decorating their classroom doors. And I thank you again for inviting me to this evening's board meeting.
Don't run away, Kate. Did I hear that you were on the scheduling committee as well?
I am on the scheduling committee.
All right, without revealing any secrets here, tell us what you've learned since you've been on the committee. A couple of big takeaways, like I had no idea X, Y, or Z.
I've definitely learned a lot, especially my parents went to the high school, so it's very crazy to see that the school day we're going through right now is like the exact same as it was in the eighties, or whenever my parents went to high school, I don't really know.
The eighties wasn't very long ago, Kate.
Yeah. But I think it's very cool to see like how it can be created and to have like seat time, but also like an outlet for speakers and colloquium and things like that. I think it's very interesting, and I've definitely learned a lot.
All right, great. Thanks. Extemporaneous speaking, you get an A+ there, except for the eighties crack. All right. At least she didn't say the seventies. So a couple of other things I wanted to mention. One of the things that we have the pleasure of watching and experiencing is one of Jim Collins' things that he talks about in terms of developing a great organization is first who, then what. And we see the work that Mr. Rogers and Mrs. Fagel are doing. We bring in great people, and then they're beginning to do all sorts of different, really interesting and challenging projects. Among those is the development of the one-to-one initiative and another one, the schedule, the schedule considerations. Just those things alone are opening up all sorts of new ideas, new thinking, revisiting ideas that were put on a shelf a long time ago the staff had. And what I can tell you that's really gratifying to see and a compliment to our staff is how many different people in different parts of the building have raised their hands already or are raising their hands and say, hey, I want to try this, hey, I'm interested in that. And it is people, we had an opening position, open position just recently, and had nearly a dozen people, many of whom we did not expect to raise their hand, come forward and say, I'm really interested in this idea. So what that's done is that's shown us that we have much more bench strength than we thought we would have. It also helps us help those people develop. It's one of the most gratifying things of the past couple of months. The trip to Rockville, we talked about last month, we have a Rockville reunion coming up, and what that is, is to pull the group back together, the entire group back together, and then process what are our next steps, because we've learned a great deal since that trip. We pulled together an even better data set about what we're doing and what we'd like to be doing to share with the group and then move forward. One of the most exciting things that we're about to begin, and any community member that gets an invitation, and everyone will get an invitation, to participate in this is a mission, vision, and goals. A set of conversations that we're going to have, and we'll be talking about that later on in this meeting. But this is genuinely an opportunity for community members to come in, learn about what we're doing, why we're doing it, and where we should be headed with our kids. The direction of the district, and as much as anything else, a great deal of our administrative effort is going into looking for ways and creating ways to have more kids, to have more opportunities. And this is related to what is called a growth mindset by a researcher, Carol Dweck, that students don't have a fixed amount of anything at any point in their life, and many of us can relate to this, especially the men. Our wives tell us, boy, how you've grown and developed, and it's been a lot of work, but you're getting there. But a great many of the, particularly the boys, you see this where they are young and immature, and they develop over time. And that growth mindset really says that if you believe in kids, if you stimulate them, if you challenge them, provide them opportunities, they will turn out to be much better at many more things than we ever could have imagined. And that's certainly the case, the boardrooms of the world are full of those ADHD kids that got out of school and made good. And what we want to do is create as many of those opportunities for as many kids in our, under our charge as possible. So that's one of the general directions that we have moving forward. With that, Mr. Berger, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks, Kate, for being here. We went through a long time where the person who sits in your chair wasn't coming to these meetings, and I have to tell you, it's a lot better to have you here than not. Thank you for coming. It's time now for public participation. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board, now would be your time. If not, we will move into reports and discussions, and I think we'll start with myself and Mr. Schreiber, along with Mr. DeRosa and Mr. Sullivan, if you can join us up there. So last month, I talked about in my president's report about a trip that Mr. Schreiber and I would be making beginning the next day to China. And we're now back from that trip and wanted to just share a little bit about our experience and introduce some of the folks that we traveled with and let them share theirs as well. Just a little background, we participated in a delegation with the China Bridge. This is a group that's sponsored by the Hanban, which is an affiliate at the Chinese government's Ministry of Education. They sponsored and hosted our delegation, along with almost 400 other people from across the United States on a visit to China. Hanban's stated purpose is to provide Chinese language and cultural services and to address the needs of Chinese language learners around the world. They work in a partnership with the College Board and offer this China Bridge program, which involves a week-long visit to China and provides an opportunity to better understand the Chinese language, culture, and educational system. From Lake Forest, we had ten people taking part in the trip. Three District 67 building principals, two District 67 faculty members who are involved in Mandarin program, one District 67 board member, the two high school faculty members who are here, Mr. DeRosa and Mr. Sullivan, along with myself and Mr. Schreiber as board members for the high school. The question was asked after we got back, why China? And I had, gave some thought about it, you know, why China and why not Finland was the way the question was posed. And as I thought about it, you know, the obvious thing is that there's a clear nexus to a very popular, growing, and successful Mandarin program that exists within the Lake Forest schools. But beyond that, there's this huge cultural gap that exists between our two countries. And I don't think, having now been there, believe that it's something that you can really appreciate without experiencing it firsthand. Additionally, the relative significance of China as a global economic power can't be denied, and making an understanding of the country available to our kids is really important and growing more so every day. Finally, and maybe most importantly, it's cheap. It's really cheap. Due to the Hanban sponsorship, the cost of the program to the district and board members who actually paid their own way is only about $900 apiece. So it's hard-pressed to figure out, who's that guy? How you could travel, desperately needing that exercise in the morning. So before I turn it over, I just wanted to share why I went. And last year, Mr. Simic stood here and made a presentation about his recent trip through a similar program, if not the same one. And I came away from his presentation feeling like there was a lot of romanticizing and glorifying of China, and I've come to learn since that that was nowhere close to his intention. But I wanted to better understand the significance, the importance, and the merits of the programs that we have here. But beyond that, on a personal level, I wanted to test my perceptions about the country, and some of those that it's rigid, robotic, oppressed, heavily controlled, some of those things are true. For me, really, the important thing was to move away from forming and carrying really strong opinions about things that I really don't know much about. And I think that's something that is becoming kind of epidemic in our, in our community and our society, that very vocal opinions expressed about things people don't necessarily know a lot about. And so I wanted to take the time to dive into this and learn more about it. And so in the end, it was an amazing experience for me, worth the financial cost, the time away from my family and my work, and I'm very glad I went. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Sullivan, so that he can share a little bit about why he decided to go and what his takeaways were.
Thank you. And I would like to thank the board for allowing me to go. And I wanted to thank Hanban for paying for almost all of it, so really thank you to them. While we did three major sightseeing, we saw three major sightseeing venues. We saw the Forbidden City, Tiananmen Square, and the Great Wall, about two hours each. The rest of the time, we were visiting schools. We did a teeny bit of shopping, but make no mistake, this was absolutely a business trip. You know, we were there to look at schools and to learn about the Chinese education system. So we did do those three sightseeing things, but we visited six schools. We were generally given a wake-up call about five or 5:30, and we'd get home around 8:30 at night. We saw, we started in Beijing, where we saw a school, and then we saw those three sites, but then we went on to Tianjin. Now Tianjin is the second-largest city, and they've got 13 million people and 3 million students, so their district is 3 million. So it's pretty big. The schools are very interested in forming partnerships with schools from the United States. And they were, they felt, I felt like they were really, they're kind of recruiting us to form those partnerships. I wanted to go, one of the reasons I wanted to go is because I'm the administrator in charge of the China Exchange Program, where every other year, we send about 12 students to China, and they, we have a sister school in Shanghai, where they'll live with families for a week, and they'll do some sightseeing, but they'll also attend schools. We have about 12 go, but it's very popular. We actually turn away quite a few students who are very interested in going, but we can only take 12 with the resources and the number of chaperones that we're able to send. So one of the reasons I wanted to go is, first of all, to see what was so attractive to them about going. And so I think I did find that out. It is such a different culture that there's so much that we can learn and so much that they really want to learn from us. But I would like to see in the future that we can expand our program to be able to include more students based on the interest. And I mean, these are 12, we get, you know, we have to turn away about two-thirds of the students, and they're missing one week of spring break. So that is a pretty big deal. I think if it was a different time of the year, we'd even get more students. So the demand, I think, is definitely there. What I got out of it, it was a very powerful experience. It wasn't all fun. There was some good, some bad, some a little scary, you know, and, but some really exciting things and some really exciting opportunities. I think that I understand better, you know, even though I was only there for two weeks, I have a much deeper understanding for why you'd want to go. And the culture there is just so steeped in history, and it's such an important part of their school system. They have little mini history museums in each school, and they're very proud of all the famous people who went there, famous to them, some of them famous to be, but not all. My aha moment was really their pride in the history of their place, but it was also the, their expectations. They have very lofty expectations for their students. Now, they also have very sharp teeth. If you don't meet those expectations, you know, you're not going to go to college, period. So the culture is really based on, they have a really strong drive, drive to succeed. But another thing was how much they want us. They want our help. They can produce a lot of students. There are more Chinese, people learning Chinese, I'm sorry, people learning English in China than speak English in the United States. It's not even close. But they need our help, because their, their system of education is really archaic, and that's their words. They think that we do a great job with helping students to be critical thinkers, and they want help from us on helping their students. So I also, again, want to thank you for allowing us to go, and turn it over to Joe.
Hi, I'm Joe DeRosa. I teach social studies at Lake Forest High School. I want to start by thanking you for this opportunity to go to China, and also to thank the College Board and Hanban for making this possible. This was a tremendous opportunity for me. Also, I want to say hi to my former student, Kate Wally. Okay. My, I'm going to start, I guess, with my, with my takeaway and what I got out of the trip. First, why I wanted to go was because, as a history teacher and having read about China and having come to an understanding that China's both a competitor and also, you know, a close friend to the United States with, you know, a multi-thousand-year history, I wanted to see what that looked like. I wanted to see what it was that I've been reading about, what I've been learning about. I also am interested in having a role in our Mandarin program and in our Chinese exchange program and taking an increased role. My first takeaway was that, looking around China, just spending a lot of time on the bus going from school to school, and also taking a look at how their educational system's set up and how we were treated, that China's a developing nation still, and it has problems that need to be solved. Pollution, tremendously large population, the kind of problems that come with rapid growth issues. But at the same time, I think they understand that, and they're looking for solutions, and they're looking for partnerships to help find those solutions. And I think that there's an opportunity for Lake Forest High School and the Lake Forest districts, there's an opportunity in that, in those partnerships. Second, China is driving towards the future. My aha moment was sitting on the bus and taking a look at empty high-rises. High-rises that have been built where they just are planning to bring people in from the countryside to continue to build a city with 30 million people out, a city that's Beijing the size of Belgium. That kind of drive, that kind of planning for the future, I think has tremendous possibility for success, tremendous possibility for failure, but within that, they are, they are driving. They are looking for relationships. They're ambitious. They're attempting to make connections all over the place. What that looks like in terms of their educational process, they've made some key choices. On a very fundamental level, they have an educational model that features huge lecture-based classes, 35-minute-long classes with as many as 60 students in the room, a classroom about the size of mine, with one teacher delivering a straight lecture-based instruction. Lake Forest High School features a far more dynamic model for teaching and learning. And I think that that's something that the Chinese are looking to change. They're looking to develop a more innovative classroom. At the same time, their national test is foremost in the mind of their students. Those kids are thinking about that test all the time. I spoke with a teacher who was from Germany who taught business, and he said that of the, he had 50 students in his class, and he said, of those 50 students, he knows there are days where none of them are listening to him. They're studying for their TOEFL. They're studying to come and, you know, be a student in an American university. They're studying to get a good enough score on their Chinese exam so that they can then go to a university. So it's very much a test-based structure. There's not a whole lot of creativity in that model, but their attempts to, you know, generate that kind of creativity are stunning. We saw science labs and just tremendous attempts at growth, the 4D printer, 3D printer. I mean, there's just a lot to it that they're trying to do. So how can Lake Forest use this? I think there's a lot of opportunity. The Chinese model lacks innovation, but it's tremendously open to new ideas. It's open to new relationships, and I think an inherent in this relationship is US leadership and a lot of Chinese partnership. We have a student-centered classroom model. We benefit, we would benefit from an international focus, continuing to build these relationships. And I think that we would help Chinese teachers find a dimension in their teaching that they might not have, or that might not be the focus right now. At the same time, as I said before, I think I personally benefited from being able to turn around after having gone to China and start my China unit the next day in my World History class, which gave me a perspective that I think was just really, really valuable. The last thing, it was really nice to spend seven days getting to know two board members. I know Mr. Sullivan pretty well, but having the chance to meet Todd and Dave and talk about our families and talk about Lake Forest High School and what they value in teaching and learning, that was a really great opportunity for me. So I don't want to go, you know, too much longer with this presentation without saying it was really nice to get to know them. Yeah, that's it. Now I'll just knock the microphone over.
Well, they picked the bone pretty clean, so I will, I will keep mine brief. I would say, though, that we went over there with 300-plus delegates from across the US, and the Lake Forest delegation made us very proud to be there as, as board members. And I am including the representation from District 67. What I mean by that is, while we were there, we had opportunities for these forums, where we would sit down with other high schools, colleges, or elementary schools and talk about, specifically high schools, but talk about exchange programs and other programs that we could do together, and some of the similarities and some of the differences. And what was so great was, at the end of these small discussions, these tabletop discussions, reports had to be shared. People would stand up and ask for the microphone. And I think probably of the eight readouts that, that happened, I'm thinking of a day in particular, six of them were Lake Forest people stood up and shared the lessons learned. So I'd say Lake Forest was very well, represented very well while we were there. In terms of, I guess, my takeaway was the similarities and the differences. They have smart boards, they've got Apple computers, they've got some differences certainly, where the teachers have 10 classes a week versus, you know, 25 classes a week, which is common in the US. Maybe my, the biggest contribution I can make at this point, given what's been covered, is I can tell you what you've been watching flash by here. These are my takeaways. This is a, most of these from my camera. That's a MacBook. Heard Apple just got in there, but I think they've been there for a while. This is right outside the Confucius Institute, some street games. And this is where, Confucius Institute, this is the footprint of where a lot of Mandarin is getting, is getting taught. This is a dance class, and a lot of the classes that we got to attend were traditional, but then we got to see some, some modern classes as well. Lots of smiles. Again, when, when they were showing off, they were showing off things like, well, this is an eye exercise, this is one of the differences, we don't do eye exercises here in the States. That's to manage nearsightedness, apparently. And this is in the Forbidden City. Saw some really great things. Also, I didn't expect to see that in the Forbidden City, but that's where we were. Any questions? For any of us?
I want to put you on the spot here.
Sure.
There's been significant talk over, I'll pick a timeframe, five or six years, about our diving into Mandarin broadly and diving into, you know, sister-school relationship and these kinds of trips to China. And I expect, if I were to ask Mike what his opinion was, since he made a decision to send people over again, I suspect I know what his answer would be, and I suspect if I asked Todd as the board president, he would give a similar answer, but I'm curious to your perspective on the value gained from this type of outreach and cooperation and to the district. Because I know you're a straight shooter, and you'll say what you think.
I think it's a, it's a global economy, and it's important that we are monitoring, education is under serious scrutiny in the US. I think it's, it's very valuable that we're monitoring, just maybe from a purely competitive perspective, how they're teaching and how they're learning everywhere around the world. That's a lot of places, and then you have to start prioritizing. So then you look at China, and they've got four times the population we've got. They have about half of the GDP, the economy that we've got, but they're, but they're still number two, being half of our, half of our GDP. Then you look at how many people are speaking Mandarin and English around the world. It's about 1.2 billion, 1.3 billion. Those are big numbers, but they're about the same. And you look in the US, there's 2.8 million people that speak Mandarin in the US. That's second to Spanish, certainly. But if you look at the growth that China's going through, 7.7 year-over-year in terms of GDP, it just can't be ignored. So I think, hopefully answering your question- So I think, hopefully answering your question, um, we need to look at best practices around the world, but then we need to prioritize. And I think this opportunity that was created to go to Beijing and Tianjin for the right price, um, was, was well worth, was well worth the investment. And for me, just the, the professional development opportunity, um, and to steal from Joe a little bit to, to get to know our teachers was really valuable.
Great, thanks.
You know, I had a quick question, really more to Jim and Joe. I mean, you know, you hear a lot about how advanced some of these international educational systems are and that, you know, as smart as we think we are as, as citizens in the United States, that we may not be as advanced as folks in China, for example. What was your first impression? And did, did that strike you at all when you were there, or did it give you more of a sense of pride that, you know, we're actually doing some things right and we can compete on a global level as well?
I think the, uh, the main difference was that of expectations, and they take that to the nth degree. And as Joe said, it's based on testing. Their expectations do exceed ours, that's true, uh, but that starts at home. The, their, their expectations from home are astronomical, but students are tested at every level to go to the next level. So while we didn't see that on this year's trip, last year's trip, uh, they went to a school where, you know, one of the lessons they looked at was how to be a maid. And, and that's the reality if you don't test into the correct school. As far as educational practices in the classroom, uh, they were archaic. They were, it was straight lecture, and when, you know, we were in this forum and we said that we teach five a day, twenty-five a week, they said, no, no, you're not understanding my translation. We teach ten a week, you teach five a week. No, I said, no, five a day. They didn't even believe us. So the rest of the day, they spend tutoring students, uh, and they, some, many of them script their lectures. So as far as, uh, learning a lot from pedag-, about pedagogy from China, maybe not so much. About expectations, maybe something there. But my, my takeaway for the education system is they're doing so much to learn about us and they're looking to us still as a big brother. I think it is incumbent upon us to be their partner while we still are the big brother, uh, that our students do learn about their system because they're taking so much time to learn about ours.
I, I think that when you ask about, um, did I, you know, come back taking a certain sense of pride in what Lake Forest does, um, that, that, that answer's yes. In looking at the way that their classrooms are structured with a huge class size, with a lecture-based model, um, and then having the students essentially in what is a ten-hour-a-day test prep model, uh, I think nuts and bolts, fundamental skills education, I think the Chinese schools do an excellent job, that's what they stress. Um, I think when it comes to dynamic instruction, when it comes to, you know, learning creatively in the classroom, I, I don't think they're, they're even close. Um, I don't, I, I think that they think that if they can find a program, they can just incorporate that program and then it'll be settled. Um, but at, at their basic root, that lecture-based model only can take them so far, and then pro-, pressing kids for the test can only take them so far. And our social-emotional component, I, I didn't find anything like it in China. I didn't hear anyone talk about educating the social-emotional wellness of a student unless it was, it was mentioned once in Tianjin, and it was like our third school of the day, so it all kinda, that part kinda blended. But they said, yeah, they should think about that, and it was passed over very quickly. So that idea of educating the whole student in a more holistic and dynamic version of education, I think we, I, I think that's our real strength.
Just wanted to add something really quick to that too, John, that I think it's a good question, but, uh, just for clarification, the, the invitation to travel to China from Hanbin was not based on their belief that they have a superior system that they wanna show off, and our desire to go was not to see a system that we expected to be superior to ours. They're very open about where their system is lagging, and what they're seeking from us is help in doing in the next ten years what it's taken us a hundred years to do. And when you look around these cities and you see these buildings and you see what's happened there, from a structural development standpoint over the last twenty to thirty years, it's hard to imagine that if they set their minds to it, they won't, they won't be able to achieve it. And if they do achieve it and they, and they begin to open up, when, when you spend some time with these young people there, what you realize is that they're, they're keenly aware of, of the shortfalls of, of their, the system in which they live, and they're being very patient about waiting their turn, knowing that if they rise up too abruptly, too loudly, that the system will come crashing down on them and it will reverse everything that's been done s-, over the last couple of decades. But I, I just wanna make it clear that this was not a, an expedition to experience something that anybody, including them, believed to be superior to ours. Any other questions?
I think just first a comment and then a question. One of the things that I think Bear's pointing out is our board members went at their own expense and also took time off of work and took their own vacation time to participate in this trip. This is one example among many of the contributions and the sacrifices that our board members make individually in order to serve as trustees of their community. So thank you for that. I know that was not an easy thing, uh, for you to do personally or professionally, cause both of you have other jobs besides volunteering for the school. The question I had is, you must have been thinking while you're over there about how this would benefit our kids and opportunities for our kids, uh, either now or in the future. It's obvious that the Chinese seek a benefit from having us over there, but what do you see as being our Lake Forest High School students benefit from these exchanges?
I'll let these guys go, uh, with just a really quick answer. Mine was spending time with the young people there and gaining an understanding of how prepared they are to move forward with a more open society, more, uh, open economy. They wanna be like us, more so than they wanna be like they've been. Uh, they see wealth, there's, there's a lot of evidence of new money, there's also a lot of evidence of old poverty. They wanna be in the Maserati, not on the bike, riding down the side of the street with a life lash to the front and back fender. And, and that's an opportunity because as they open up, the market grows by one-point-three billion people and fourteen trillion by the time it gets there, uh, that, that's an opportunity.
Uh, for our students, I think that when our students who are currently in the immersion program get to the high school, um, I would like to have, uh, developed with, with, uh, sister schools, plural, um, somewhere for them to continue their education because, you know, when, when they get to the high school, they're gonna be fluent, and we're not, that's not a model that we've seen before in, in really any language, not on a, not a broad scale. We need to have educational opportunities for them. Uh, China is interested not just in two-week, uh, exchanges, they're interested in semester or year-long exchanges. Our students are gonna be ready for that, and what an enormous opportunity that's gonna be for these students to be able to go to school in, say, Tianjin. I think it would be extraordinarily beneficial for them, uh, as, as their, you know, just as far as what they would learn, but opportunities for, for their future, I think would be extraordinary.
When I got back to class the next day, what I told my students was that, that this was a place that they needed to see, um, that they needed to know about, that they needed to understand. Having now been to China and seen the drive that is, you know, pushing China to the future, uh, it's, I, I think there's tremendous opportunity for our kids to have an experience in high school that sets them apart as they look to college, as they look even beyond college. And it's the kind of experience that they can get in high school that will give them a distinct advantage as we look to the future. I think it's something we can give them, and when they have that, they will then be able to understand a bit of, you know, Chinese culture and hopefully a bit of the Chinese language, and that would, that would set them apart, that would give them an advantage that would allow for them to go on an exchange program, uh, perhaps study a little bit more about China in college, but also just understand it, you know, from a business perspective or from an educational perspective. And China is open to doing that. They're very willing and they have a structure that allows for that sort of exchange to happen at just a very basic level. So I think it's just a great opportunity.
Any other questions?
I just, um, excuse me, one quick question about, uh, Mandarin versus, you know, push for Mandarin, say, over German in French, Spanish.
Yeah.
Why, why Mandarin? Well, I know it's partially supported by...
Sure. I, why, why Mandarin? I think that, uh, if we just look at the numbers alone on the economic influence and opportunities that China creates, and I think about the outcomes that we're trying to create for our graduates, I wanna s-, I, I think that China is going to, in many ways, create, as Joe said, a competitive differentiator. Being able to speak Mandarin takes roughly eighty-eight weeks. Um, these are round numbers, not my area of expertise, but to give you a sort of a, um, a, a, a level set, languages that are easier for us to acquire as English speakers, as, as native English speakers, Spanish, French, some of the Romance languages, take about twenty-four weeks in total, and whatever hours that adds up to. There's another language level category in between, category two, that's the Finnish, Hindi, things like that. And then you get into category, uh, three, which is the Asian languages, primarily Mandarin, Korean, Cantonese, Japanese, eighty-eight weeks. You look at the, the, the ease of acquisition, the degree of difficulty, students coming out, speaking Spanish, for example, which is what I studied, so I can pick on that one, you know, ten percent of the US already speaks that. Two-point-eight million, number-two language spoken is Mandarin, but it's difficult, and I think the kids that decide to pursue that are gonna set themselves up to be able to pursue careers in a lot of different areas, but be uniquely differentiated because of that skill, if that's something that they wanna bring to bear. But the language is just one part of it, there's the cultural study of it as well and this whole idea that we're not always, not my quote, so I, I can't remember who to attribute it to, but we're not, uh, learning in preparation for life, but it's in fact, uh, learning that's part of the ex-, life experience, and, uh, going to China has definitely crossed that, that boundary for me, um, I think some of the others. If anyone has another an, question, I will keep my answer much shorter. All right, thank you.
Is that you, San Carlos?
Yes. I think he was.
Well, that probably speaks for itself, I think, as these guys get set up, uh, Mr. Simic is going to make a brief presentation on a separate but not wholly unrelated topic of the International Baccalaureate Program. And as long as Mr. DeBose is up here and vulnerable, I might as well pick on him a little bit. Last week, the world, uh, was greeted by a new Cornelius DeBose in Las Vegas, was it? And how's my young Mr. DeBose, Master DeBose doing?
He is doing fine. He saw his first Bears game last night, so...
(laughter)
Press that to go forward.
All right, so Cornelius' son had, had, had his own?
This is the first grandchild, is that right?
Very nice. Now, not that he's proud or anything, but he's got pictures of this little guy all over the place. So, uh, congratulations, Cornelius. All right, so Mr. Bergener spent a good deal of time talking, uh, about, about China, uh, and when he came back, he said, hey, I'm very interested in learning a little bit more and sharing a little bit more about what the International Baccalaureate Program is. This is something that, uh, they spent a fair amount of time, uh, being exposed to in China, and so, uh, give a brief rundown of what this is. So the background, there's, there were international kids all over the world and every country in the world, many of them embassy kids, but a fair number of them also corporate kids that were living in various places. And one of the difficulties that the families had was they would take a student from Bangkok and they would move to Dubai or they would move to Hamburg, Germany, and there was this crazy inability to translate any sort of coursework for these kids, and this happened grade after grade, and much of the international community is very mobile. And so, uh, an organization developed known as, uh, IB that created a lingua franca, if you will, of coursework and expectations for these schools, and schools then joined to participate. It started out being primarily private schools, and then as public schools, uh, saw that what kind of brand this was, they began to pick this up, and at this point, about half the schools, uh, half the IB schools in the world are public schools. The mission statement, uh, to abbreviate it, uh, for students across the world, they really are focused on developing, it sounds right at this point, but lifelong learners. It is focused on deep understanding and a, a wide variety of values that they have, that they want to thoroughly expose kids to and imbue, uh, with their students. This is what the IB learner profile is, and all through a good IB school, you will see these things reflected. Open-ended discussion, open-minded, they're driven by questions rather than answers. They do a really good job of that. Uh, the risk-taking, appropriate risk-taking behaviors, uh, in the classroom, also balance, something that resonates certainly with, with our communities here, and the notion of being both knowledgeable but especially an enquirer, and that is the, the seeking to understand, the, the seeking knowledge. There are five different types of programs, I'm familiar with four of them, one of them, I believe, is recently developed, that's the bottom one. You have a preschool program, carries into elementary, middle school, what's different about the middle school is notice it goes to age sixteen. The diploma program then picks up in grades eleven and twelve, and that is, uh, that is getting your ticket punched at the university level. The, the number of students who are successful at the next level, uh, both in completing and also gaining acceptance to their preferred college is higher with students that have an IB diploma, uh, behind them. The program is, is, uh, something that requires students to pick an area of focus, I wanna focus on the, the humanities, or I wanna focus on the sciences, and they delve deeply into that and become much more specialized in that. The career, uh, related certificate, those are things that are more, uh, vocationally-oriented and something that, uh, I'm not all that familiar with, I have to do a little bit more research to find out how long that's been around. Uh, to become an IB school, there is a very extensive pro-, uh, process that schools go through. Lake Forest would be an ideal candidate for this. It begins with consideration and ends two to three years later on a decision on authorization. Well, you hire somebody within the district to shepherd the process through, to put the necessary documents together, there are site visits, there are things that you agree to in terms of training for your staff and so forth, a great deal of professional development that's required to become an IB school. This is where you send, either send people out... This is where you send, either send people out or bring people in to train your staff on those methodologies. An example I used earlier was the, the unit that staff develop on ecosystems of the bayou, where the music of the bayou is studied, the history of the bayou is studied, and the, the literature and so on. And all the teachers in the four core areas and the arts and the electives participate in the creation of that. And by the time a student is done with that, they really have a deep understanding. So these units take longer. It's not like an inch deep or a mile wide. One unit might be three or four weeks. And the unit will be driven by a big question. So in the, in the instance of the Mississippi Delta, it would be, how has the, the rivers, how it has a river influenced culture and literature? And, or economic development, or however you want to frame that. And so that is the lens through which students view everything and, and teachers teach. Our districts have experience with IB. There are two units recently that were done in District sixty-seven. The big water unit is about a three-week-long thing for third graders. And then just last year was a week-long Holocaust project, and driven by different teachers' interests in these ideas. So these are not IB units, but they are what we call IB-inspired. My former life, I was head of a K eight IB school, been associated with this programming for essentially my entire career, either been interested in it or involved in it. Many benefits, among them, the very integrated curriculum, the global emphasis, and for our students in a, in a flat world, this aspect of IB is really attractive, especially if we were to bring programming like this into our district with a number of international headquarters that we have, the odds are that we would attract a large number, a larger number. And one of the things that we saw this past year at the high school was that we went around for the new parent orientation, and Mr. Rogers and I were in the room, and it was, it's, where did you come from and tell us about your kids? And about half of the room came directly from overseas, and the other half of the room had been somewhere else before they came to the United States to come to us. So if, if they were from Connecticut, they used to live in Belgium, and so on. It was, you know, Jim, I think you were there too. It was shocking to all of us in the room. And so we would have more, presumably more of those families coming to us. At its best, it is a guaranteed curriculum. It is very viable, really rigorous, and translates into, as I said, greater success at the next level. Differentiation, for us in terms of differentiating our community from others, we would be, if we adopted this, the only school on the North Shore that is a, a high school of any size that has an IB program. There are some significant drawbacks to looking at IB. The first is that it will not run effectively in tandem with an AP program, and we've got a huge investment in our AP programming. You can retain your math. Typically, that's what IB schools do, they retain math. There's a cost, there's a training, that wouldn't be an issue. But it really, more than anything else, represents a significant shift philosophically, because part of what would go away for us would be both the AP coursework, but also the amount of elective choices that students have, because there will, there is an IB eighth, ninth-grade English class, for example. There aren't four or five of those classes. And so it's much more, it is limiting, if you will. Well, it opens up at the end, it is more limited at the beginning. Big question for us, I see there being three different directions that we can go in the future, one of those being further refining what we've got. And I think by just about any measure, we look at our high school and we say, we have one of the greatest high schools in the nation, in the world. No hesitation saying that. We can pursue International Baccalaureate, or, as Mr. Rogers did in his experience at Northside College Prep, they created their own brand. And that brand became very, very powerful in and of itself, both within our region, but also, Northside is one of those colleges that is recogn, or universities that is recognized as its own entity. So you talk to colleges, they'll say, yep, I know that school, and it's, it's on the map. And if there is a community that could create something like that, perhaps a community that should create something like that, it is a place like Lake Forest, and I think we would do a terrific job of that. So moving forward, those are the questions that, uh, that's one of the big questions that we have, is which direction would we most like to go? And what are the advantages of each of those? And then you weigh that carefully and, and pursue it aggressively. Uh, any questions?
Yeah. Mike, you, you've mentioned earlier about, well, two, two parts. One, when you say AP and IB are not compatible, can you talk about why that is? And then also, can you talk about the perception that a high school student coming out of the IB program, the perception that universities are going to have of that person as a candidate relative to someone that's not from an IB program?
One of the reasons that it's difficult to run the, the programming within the same four walls is that each of them, they're, they're very different philosophically. So if you want to have students building up to an IB diploma program, you're going to start that in the early years, preschool, move that right on through, and those kids are going to be part of that IB learner profile, which is very integrated. And then that will ramp them up to success in your diploma program. The AP program is based on the notion that we are going to bombard you with specific kinds of information in specific subject areas and leave it up to you to connect all those things together. Uh, that is one of the, the big downfalls. One of our board members mentioned that in an AP history class, you can drop your pencil and miss a hundred years. Uh, that, that kind of thing is very characteristic of AP. AP's also gotten a lot of criticism for that, and they've had to change, in my opinion, in part because of pressure that they're experiencing from IB. IB is cutting into their market, if you will. Uh, the IB very intentionally makes those connections part of the learning process, so that they are both explicit but also implicit in everything that is done. The kids that come out of that program, the, the diploma is so rigorous that effectively the kids hit the wall earlier. It is, it is deep, it is rich, it is very challenging. And if they do well there, they have extended, one of the primary projects is an extended essay, which is a, uh, it's like a research paper times five. And if they do well on that, which they do, that prepares them for anything that they might see. So what very often happens, and I could say also that many, many, many of our students come back and say, you know what, high school over-prepared me for college. IB does that as well. It does it in a different way, but it does that so that kids go off and what they experience in, in college is maybe different, but in many ways, it's not more challenging than much of what they experience as kids. Part of it is because they're older and more mature and, you know, have, have ramped up for that level of preparation. Does that answer your question?
Excellent. I think one, one of the questions, though, and I'm not sure, maybe I missed it, but the, one of the things that we heard, uh, standing out in a, outside of a university in Tianjin was a, a board member from Washington State talking about an IB program they have there and the university down the road, who actually gives about a half to a full point GPA credit.
Right.
To kids who are coming, who are applying with a diploma, an IB diploma. So that was one of the things that was intriguing about it, and curious as to why that would be, and I think you've answered a lot of that question. The other thing that was interesting about it, though, is the, to, to understand how interact, how collaborative the, the different departments need to be. And then, as Joe alluded to, we had a lot of time to just kind of spitball with one another as we're riding around in buses and, and just sitting around talking about stuff. But the, when you connect this with thoughts about a new schedule and, and the desire to create opportunities for kids, but also to create opportunities for the instructor, instructors, it, who are teaching twenty-five classes a week, and there, there aren't the hours in the day to allow them to collaborate, and yet, when we talk to at least a couple of them, there's a strong desire to do that. And, and this kind of program, it seems to me, kind of forces that, um, but on a, on a pretty willing population. And so everybody wins, it would seem to me. But there's some cost to it, as you, as you know.
Yeah, there's always, you know, there is a selective abandonment, if you will, that is necessary in order to be effective at any given thing. One of the things, we visited Rockville Center Schools, and they moved from an AP curriculum to an IB. They started at their high school, which is atypical. But one of the things that they did is, over a period of years, they tracked the success rate of students completing college. And they monitored what happened when they moved to the IB program, and then they monitored which kids had what kind of programming at their school to see what sort of success rates they had. And what they, what they observed was, the students that were in the IB program and the students that completed the IB program had a very different success, completion rate at the college level than students that had not had that. And as Mr. Black pointed out earlier, he was good enough to join us on that trip, a very good observer, is that it's not just being in a high school that is a great high school, it's having access to that curriculum, and that translates into college completion. So that's one of the reasons why universities would add points to a student's application is because of the likelihood of success. The student will stay, will stick and stay and be successful there.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for taking the time to put this together. And now back to the printed agenda, right? Lauren Fagel will provide a assessment report, is that correct?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to present what has traditionally been an annual assessment report. Um, I want to start by saying it's been a great tonight to see board members and our superintendent up behind the microphone, so I'm feeling like way less nervous, because everyone had their turn, so. And I also want to start by thanking Thor Benson at the high school, who has, I believe, a decades-long career at Lake Forest High School, has served in many different roles, and currently is a tremendous resource for me and Mr. Rogers and our work. In particular, played a crucial role in helping pull together the data for this report. Barry and I are co-presenting this evening. Um, I'm finding that it's, it makes a lot of sense for me to have him next to me as often as possible, uh, 'cause he has a whole bunch of knowledge and expertise that I don't. And so hopefully, together, we can, we can convey some important information, as well as a picture of going forward with assessment. And the theme of tonight is that assessment in education is changing. Just like we talk about change everywhere else, this piece of our world is changing, and it's changing quickly. Um, and in, in the spirit of that, like I said, traditionally, this has been an annual report. My goal in my position is to come to you more frequently and give you a more robust picture of what assessment looks like in a school setting. Our students are being assessed every day in every class in different ways. As a community and as a board and with our mission, vision, goals process, we will determine together what are the most important measures, but it's, it's too narrow to just look at what is reported in the newspapers, which is typically your standardized tests and that's it. Assessment is, is much deeper and broader than that. In many ways, right now, as educators, we feel like it's a very foggy picture ahead. We are about to, we're on the cusp of a huge transition with the standardized assessments moving from the Prairie State to the park exam, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Um, and there's, there's some big question marks about the ability of that organization and that system to come to fruition. So that's a little nerve-wracking right now, that, that we're, we're in this, this foggy time. But if you look carefully, or at least I, there they are, the others, two, there's two headlights in there, and that's kind of the light at the end of the tunnel, and that's, that's the area that I focus on, and that's where I try to keep our eyes on the prize and stay true to what research tells us is most effective. So when you, when you take the, the politics and the changing nature of a standardized assessments, if you, if you peel all that away, what you come down to is what the research tells us is most effective in order to raise student achievement, which regardless how high our achievement ever is, part of our work as educators is to come every day and strive to improve it even more. And one of the best references that I've come across in my work is a book by John Hattie called Visible Learning. It's a synthesis of over eight hundred meta-analyses relating to achievement. So essentially, he looked at all the research that's ever been done on student achievement, and came away with what turned out to be the title of his book, which is that the number one most effective method for improving achievement is by giving students one hundred percent visibility into what they are learning and why. I think it's deceivingly simple, just like, of course, we want them to know what they're learning and why they're learning it, but building an entire system around that is much more complex. Students in this type of school are able to articulate what they are learning, their progress toward meeting that goal, what the next step is, and how they can get there. And that's what gets me to work every morning, is how can we get closer and closer to creating that type of environment? And I, I believe our work is never done. Tonight, you will see some of the things traditionally that have been shown in this report, our, our Class of 2013 ACT results, our rankings according to the press, our students' growth from the plan test to the ACT that they take in April of their junior year, to their final ACT score, uh, which is based on their most recent time taking the ACT. Many of our students take it two, three, four, five, six, seven times in some cases. Our PSAE results, a look at our AP results, and then again, looking towards the future, what's next. This coming April is the last time that the state will administer the PSAE. So we are truly about to, to see a huge change. And then, um, ending with, again, looking at that broader view of assessment and the growth mindset that Mr. Simic referred to earlier, that really serves as a foundation for, for my work and my conversations. This graph represents our historical performance on our Class of ACT composite score. So the Class of 2004 to the Class of 2013, this is a report that ACT as a company puts out every year. And again, it's, it's takes all of the different times that students have taken the ACT, including the time they take it as part of the state testing, and takes their most recent score. In theory, that should be the best score, it's not always, uh, but that is the score they take. For the first time this year, ACT as a company changed the way they reported their scores. They report the scores now, including all of the tests that have been taken by all of our students, including those who have accommodations during testing, like extended time, or taking the test in a smaller group setting, having parts of the test read aloud. So schools all over have been, um, looking at a, at a, like apples to oranges, right? It's a new, a new data point. Uh, ACT did break that score out for schools, because they knew everyone would do it anyway, and looked to see what the breakdown was. So what you have here is our, our composite for the Class of 2013, including all tests, is twenty-four, twenty-five point nine. That's, that's a decrease of one point. Our composite, if you, if you break those scores apart, our composite based on the tests of students who had accommodations is twenty-one point nine. Tests taken by students without accommodations is twenty-six point six. So between the red X and the green box is a gap, and we are not alone in seeing that gap. It exists in virtually, well, I shouldn't say virtually, but most, most school systems see a gap like that. It raises some really important questions for us as an organization. What are we doing, what can we do to make progress towards closing that gap? I'm going to let Barry talk a little bit about that composite score as compared to the rest of the state.
So again, the composite score that we're looking
So again, the composite score that we're looking at is twenty-five point nine. It did represent a decrease of a full point for us this year. Some of that could have been attributed to just some natural variability between the classes, but as Lauren had mentioned, uh, the population of students did change this year. At the state level, um, you're seeing a number of about twenty-one point nine, so we still have, have a nice difference or delta between what you see in the state average at the school. Oh, I'm sorry, IEP, which is very similar to the state average, sorry about that. Um, and so, I think when you look at data, I think one thing, it is, it is a snapshot in time, it gives you a particular piece of information, but what hopefully data does is it provides information, and provides information for a course of action going forward. So, we believe that it's our responsibility to look at that number and to try to narrow that gap. So a lot of the work that we'll be doing as a community, as a faculty, is trying to do that. And as Lauren said, this is something that is not unique to Lake Forest High School or other schools in the area, but one that I think deserves our consideration.
The, the average drop across the state from the, from 2012 to 2013 was point three. So we did see a bigger drop, um, as compared to that average. We also have a higher percentage of students with IEPs than the average, so that, that correlation makes sense, but just to give you a basis for comparison. Um, we still stand head and shoulders above the state with our average ACT score, and, and that is something, um, that, that average score, even at twenty-four, twenty-five point nine, is something to be proud of. Um, and, and you'll see in future slides, um, oh, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Okay. In comparison to the nation, we have broken down the different categories of the ACT, uh, English, reading, math, and science, and then their composite. The writing component, um, was administered for several years, there was a two-year break, and it is nice to report that in spring 2014, the state will be funding the writing portion of the ACT in April. That is a big plus for our students, that means that that score is, is much more reportable in terms of their college application process. But if you look at the average Lake Forest High School student score, for example, let's just take math, at twenty-five point six, nationally, that, that twenty-five point, that puts us in the seventy-nine to eighty-fourth percentile of student scores. So, that composite score is something to be proud of, there's room for growth. Barry's gonna talk about some of the interesting data on gender comparison.
So if you just take a look up there, you'll notice that there are differences according to gender, and I think some of those differences that you may see, that for instance, in math, you'll see a higher number, uh, for males, you'll see for females. Uh, when it comes to reading, you'll see females, um, and higher numbers than males. And so this is a number, again, I want to emphasize, this is nothing that's unique to Lake Forest High School, but I think, one that I think all modern educators need to be looking at. And the reason being is that, you can say that this number comes from a pre-natural disposition or ability, but I think anyone who is enlightened at all about this thing really knows that that's not the case. And so, when you try to kind of, you know, take that data and look at the information, um, you'll see that these, these graphs also change over time throughout a student's career, and to, certain types of behavior that may be rewarded in certain grades, at certain types of development, is later frowned upon. And so, one of the things that we're trying to do is look at, what are the instructional practices, and how do we deliver math, and is math being delivered in a way, um, that is interesting and exciting for our, um, uh, female population? And at the same time, um, are there reading assignments, are there types of, uh, experiences that males are gonna do, that's gonna get them more into be more communicative, more communicative? See, there's a male who can't communicate. Uh, and, I mean, that's, that's one of the modern challenges that we have, and just kind of closing that gap and closing that delta. And what we're starting to see is, the good news is, it is changing. It is changing, that trend's changing not only here, but at the university level. Um, and in particular, in certain disciplines that you're gonna be finding. So, we are getting more females in the ranks of engineering and science, we are certainly getting more and more females in probably the hottest field, which is biotechnology, where it is, it is almost a wash at this point. So I think it's very, it's a very exciting area to look at, again, one that deserves consideration, and, uh, we're very excited to be looking at this. The last thing I would say about this, um, is when we're looking at gender comparison, that, again, there is no, as we go into this brave new world, we're talking about new types of assessments, we don't know what those things are looking at, new types of experiences. When we look at technology, for instance, I think this is a whole nother question. So when they talk about, you know, why are boys so much more interested in video games, perhaps? Well, it's very easy to say that the way that video games have been created, they create, they're, they're very attractive to the twelve, fourteen-year-old male brain, if you think about what's out there for them. Um, so, I think those types of questions, those big essential questions that we need to have as, as contemporary, modern educators are the ones that, the one we really want to focus on.
So moving from the Class of data to the Prairie State, again, uh, this is a state-mandated test, it's a two-day test given only to juniors, and it includes the ACT given on day one, and the work keys, which is a subset of the ACT, and then state-developed exams for reading, math, and science on day two. Social studies has not been on the exam since 2004, and again, writing was, uh, ACT writing was introduced in oh-seven. Two years it wasn't funded, but it is being reintroduced. And again, this is the last year, the last school year that the ACE, the PSAE will exist as we know it. There is a, a common theme across all high schools, which is that students are highly motivated on day one, because that score matters. It goes directly onto their college applications, and they are not motivated on day two. Um, this is something that we have anecdotal evidence of, from, for an example, Mr. Thiel at the high school is the one who actually sorts every single Scantron and can tell you the different patterns that kids might draw on day two, uh, using that Scantron as their palette. Um, but you'll see, when you juxtapose, juxtapose our ACT score against our PSAE score, you'll see the difference. So, this graph shows how our students have grown, from the PLAN, which is a precursor to the ACT, it's, it's, uh, developed by the same company. The ACT that they take on the Prairie State Day, and then finally, in the red, is their final Class of ACT average. And so our kids are making really nice growth, um, they're, they're making more than expected growth between the green line and, and the blue line. Um, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. Okay, the difference between day one and day two. Um... Will you do the question?
Yeah, certainly. So, just want to talk a little bit about the difference. Some schools, uh, will actually monitor growth over three years, doing an expla, explore, plan ACT. At Lake Forest, we look at the, the growth from between the sophomore year and the junior year, so that those lines that you see there, uh, the green and blue, um, represent that growth. And, uh, in a typical school district, I think if you're looking at a, a three-point spread, I think you're doing quite well, um, and they're somewhat normed to what an ACT score would be. So we're seeing, uh, more of a four-point spread there, which is very good. The other thing that you'll also notice is that, what you're going to see is a, a difference between the red line and the blue line. The red line represents the final ACT score, so that's the score when students have taken up their makeup exams and, and they're graduating. So, what you'll see is that, that blue line, being the, um, that PSAE, which is also the same test, so we pointed out the same test, but at the junior level. And so, no surprise, um, in the testing business, uh, past performance is probably the main indicator of future performance, so that you'll see that the shape of those lines are very similar. And so really, that's what we're looking at in terms of that representation. As Lauren referenced before, as we go forward, and I think becoming more sophisticated in terms of way we do assessment, instead of taking these one-time snapshots in, in time, um, that this, this, the assessments will be more ongoing, uh, more formative, um, and so, on one hand, you think, well, does that mean more big, high-stakes tests? No, the idea is that, that students are taking some type of test or assessment all the time in classes, to make it part and parcel of what they do, so that it is not a time when you have to close the school down, becomes part of what they do. And so part of what Park has to offer is it has more regular checkpoints throughout the year to measure students' growth and measure students' progress.
Excuse me, Barry, uh, mind if I ask a question? Are those test scores, uh, see how I can best phrase this, uh, for 2013, as a, for instance, do those represent 2013 sophomores, juniors, and seniors?
Yes.
Or are they all 2013 graduates? In other words, is that their planned score from two years ago?
That's exactly it. So the scores that you see right there represent, uh, the Class of 2013. So, um, if you see the top number, let's just go to the end of the graph, the twenty-five point nine, that's their graduating number. The twenty-five point two will be the number that they got at the junior year, and the twenty-one point one, directly below, it'll be the sophomore year.
So this is the same cohort of students?
Exactly.
Across these three tests, so...
So if you follow that vertically, it's the same.
We could have projected, rationally, that this year's class, uh, composite, forget about the change in ACT methodology, uh, you know, would reasonably have scored less than...
Just due, I think, to natural variation from one class to the next. I think that, some of it can certainly be explained there, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is our, our, a historical look at how we've done on the PSAE. The state does not, uh, break down the percentage of kids who meet and exceed on day one versus day two. We just get a score that tells us how many students of ours are in academic warning, are below standards, meet standards, and exceed standards. So, class, in 2013, eighty-three percent of our students met or exceeded state standards, and that's on reading and math combined. Um, so eighty-three percent, but then you put that, again, what I was saying, twenty-five point nine is a really healthy average ACT score. Um, eighty-three percent is, is okay, um, but it, it definitely is being influenced by day-two performance. And you can see the state percentage, fifty-three percent. So we're well above the state. But if you look from 2004 to 2013, we've stayed pretty flat. Um, but it's a question of where do we invest our time at this point? Um, do we hunker down and really look into that day-two and build up incentives for students? The test is going away, the landscape is changing, so we're gonna put our eyes towards the future, um, and, and work with what's coming next. This is just a further breakdown of the data, according to the three subject areas. Adequate yearly progress, which you, you've heard about, AYP, that is based just on reading and math, um, but they do give us percentage of meets and exceeds in reading, math, and One of the more public, uh, things that we see with these test scores is, is the two major newspapers, the Tribune and the Sun-Times, both rank high schools, uh, they rank schools, including both selective enrollment and public schools. Um, so just looking at where we fall, I think we can be very proud of the fact, um, that we're the ninth high school, um, according to the Chicago Tribune rankings and our ACT composite, that's based on our Class of results. And then the Sun-Times ranking is based on the average score on the PSAE, not on the percentage of kids who meet or exceed, but the average score. And again, um, Thor had to check this several times, because he thought it was so coincidental that we ended up ninth there as well. The future. What I've given you is a hard copy of just a few assessment items, and it doesn't take long to start looking to see that they are really different than a traditional ACT. These assessments, which will be administered in math and English slash literacy, are based on the concepts that we're giving kids, not just throughout the year, but during the exams, texts worth reading, problems worth solving, and in theory, these should be tests worth taking. Illinois belongs to Park, along with seventeen other states. Park is one of two major consortiums across the country that has developed assessments to go along with, uh, the Common Core state standards. ACT is not, um, wasting any time, they have developed their own version of a Common Core-aligned assessment called ACT Aspire, also offered from grades three through eleven, and there are some, some questions out there about Park's ability, being a, a new organization, their ability to administer, um, the type of online assessments that we're looking at throughout the, all these states, and then there's ACT, who's been in business for decades and who has a long history, um, and a successful track record of, of having an infrastructure that's capable of administering that number of assessments. So, you know, it, it could go a couple of different ways, but regardless, there will be a standardized assessment. The big difference in how schools will be evaluated, um, in Illinois is that they'll, it'll now be based on student growth, so it's no longer the one snapshot junior year. It's looking at how students perform on two required assessments each year. March is called a performance-based assessment, June is called an end-of-year assessment. Looking at how students grow on those two's assessments from one year to the next will generate a point value that then the state will use to evaluate a school. Uh, so this is, this is kind of the new version of adequate yearly progress. There's still a lot out there on what this will look like, what the ramifications will be for students and schools, or for schools that are not making adequate growth, um, but it is a step in the right direction, in that it's moving from an achievement measure to a growth measure. Um, if you're interested in what you see on the hard copies, I encourage you to go online and look at more assessment items, but again, these are, these are high-level, complex problems that kids are asked to, to attack and work with, and they will be successful if they have had exposure to that type of assessment before. But if they've only seen ACT-like assessments, and this is put in front of them, they're gonna struggle. Um, and, and I think everyone expects a drop in performance across the country, really, with these types of assessments, um, but we certainly have time to begin putting, uh, tasks like this in front of students. And a lot of our teachers, I believe, feel that these are worthy tasks, um, but it just feels different when it's mandatory. Moving on to a different measure, advanced placement. Mike talked about how this is a, really a, a key piece of our course offerings at Lake Forest High School. We currently offer these AP courses sponsored by the College Board. There's only a few that we don't offer, um, so we, we have a very robust program. And our performance on the exams is really, um, unbelievable. Ninety-five percent of our students, this is an all-time high, ninety-five percent of our, our, of the scores on AP exams, and the, the number of exams is different than the number of students, because many students take more than one exam, ninety-five percent are scoring a three or above. That is an incredible, what we would call, pass rate on these exams. So that, that is something to be proud of. Where I think we have room to grow is on the percentage of our students that are taking exams. And in the Class of 2012, we had forty-one percent of our students who took at least one AP class. It was very difficult, actually impossible, for Thor to track how many took exams, 'cause we don't record that data in Power School, but in terms of taking the class, which is the precursor to the exam, um, forty-one percent, and then Class of 2013, forty-three percent. So in terms of having access to, and this was part of the earlier conversation, uh, with IB and with the trip to China, in terms of having access to the most rigorous courses in our building, uh, not, you know, one could argue that not enough students are taking advantage or are being given access to these high-level courses. It's not so much about the AP experience as it is about the most rigorous experience. Um, and so that's an area of growth for us, that's an opportunity to, um, work together to increase that number, if that number is important to us as a community. So, a lot to celebrate. The Class of 2013 had our fourth highest average composite score. Again, that ACT exam is their ticket, um, to having more options for post-secondary education. Again, our pass rate on AP exams is incredibly high, and our PSAE performance, a very high percentage of our students continue to meet and exceed state standards. And Ill, Illinois is, is one of very few states that the state exam is the ACT. So in many ways, our state exam is much more rigorous than other states. Part of the Park assessments and the Common Core is to have a, uh, an assessment that is similar across all states, so that we can really start to make better comparisons. You heard Mike mention Carol Dweck and the growth mindset, and again, this, this really serves as the foundation for the conversations that I have and the lens that I look through, um, at this data. Data is all in the eyes of the beholder, it just, it just raises questions, it doesn't give us answers. She is known for her work, she's a professor at Stanford, she's known for her work in the area of this growth mindset. She developed this concept based on decades of research. The growth mindset is one in which people believe that their most basic abilities can be developed through dedication and hard work, brains and talent are just the starting point, versus a fixed mindset, which is the notion that, that our intellectual abilities are fixed, they are set. This growth mindset can inspire a love of learning, and more importantly, I think, a resilience that is essential, especially for young people. There's a lot of great research on resilience, and young people who go through incredibly traumatic experiences somehow manage, um, to come away and, and be successful, productive adults, and that's based on this concept of resilience. Uh, so this, this growth mindset can really shape a system, and the access that we give students to those rigorous opportunities comes from our belief that how students perform at one moment in time is not... that how students perform at one moment in time is not necessarily, not at all necessarily, a predictor of how they will perform at a future moment in time. Looking at our males is a perfect example. They mature at a slower rate. They may not be ready for that rigorous coursework in eighth grade, or second grade, or third grade, but that doesn't in any way mean that they won't be ready for it later. And so as a system, we want to be removing barriers, opening up opportunities to honor this growth mindset. And the research that shows that when kids have this mindset and the adults that work with them have this mindset, they will perform. And that's not just me hoping that they will. The research shows that they will. What's next? A lot of work ahead of us. Good, healthy work that's exciting to be a part of, and I think we have the faculty and the staff and the administration to get the work done. You've heard me talk about a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Make the learning visible. What is the goal? And it needs to be the same target for all students. Not students in honors classes get a harder target, or CP classes get a less difficult target. The target is the same. We need to further our alignment to Common Core, feel like we are giving kids opportunities to prepare for those assessments, but really using those standards as a chance to increase expectations for all students. Again, you might have heard me say, if you look at the standards and actually read the standards, these are things that teachers have wanted their students to do for hundreds of years. Read complex texts, support claims with evidence. These are standards I believe we can stand behind. Using formative assessment, giving students feedback on a regular basis, how are you making progress towards that target? Using data, not once a year, but on an ongoing basis to inform instruction. Teachers are already doing this. We need to honor that work and make it more visible. And then finally, continuous professional learning opportunities for all of us. What matters most? I think that's the question that our mission, vision, goals process will help us answer. There's a lot of different things to measure out there. You've seen scores on ACT tests and PSAE tests and AP exams and plan exams. There's a lot of other ways to look at success. And I'll leave you with the sixteen habits of mind developed by Art Costa and Ben Akalek. And if you think about what it takes to be a successful adult in today's world, I think these sixteen habits of mind, which there have been ways developed to measure them, but they're different. They're not the ACT and they're not the PSAE. There's a lot to be said for thinking about opening up our assessment system. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Are there any questions, comments for Lauren, or Barry for that matter?
Lauren, historically, a part of the assessment report has been a report on college admissions for last year's graduating class. I'm just curious, do we plan to issue that this year, or could we abandon it?
No, that's data that we can present at a future meeting. I know our guidance department gathers that. We've been thinking about moving towards even more longitudinal data beyond the admissions to see not just where they were admitted and perhaps where they attended, but what is their success rate there. But I can share that at a future meeting.
As you know, I may use support of that, but in addition to having it presented to the board, it's also been in the past posted on the website, and I think it's a huge constructive resource for parents, particularly parents of underclassmen, to better gauge what's going on and relative odds of getting into school and that sort of thing. So, you know, I think it's very useful.
With the college admissions data?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the other resource that our students have is something called Naviance, which is, you know, just an endless amount of information about kids from our high school, where they've scored, what their GPA is, and then their success rate in getting accepted to various colleges and universities. So that's as well, but we can certainly include that data in this posting.
Well, I don't know if it has to be formally included in a report, but to the extent the data exists, if it could be disseminated to the board and put on a website, I think it'd be great. Thank you.
Sure.
Lauren, am I remembering correctly that parents have access to Naviance as well?
Oh, yeah.
So they can see for themselves where.
Oh, absolutely. It's as much a parent tool as a student tool.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, don't run away, guys.
Hey, Lauren, I got a question for you.
Mike has a question for you.
Sorry.
It's just from a clean getaway.
Mike has a question?
Yeah.
Ask me tomorrow.
What was your aha moment?
By aha moment? What's that I totally?
Can you go back to slide two?
Sure, back to slide two.
Okay, so the number one, the third bullet, able to articulate what they're learning, progress towards meeting standards and learning goals, and what the next step is and how they're going to get there. There's implicit in all that is that students find meaning in what they're doing. And with the Park assessment and the PSAE, neither of those are presumably things that our students find meaning, and that's why day one looks one way, which is ACT, and kids work really hard on that, because they have a tangible outcome from that, which is college admission. And day two, there's a big drop-off. What do you anticipate experiencing from the Park assessment, which is a whole lot harder than the PSAE?
And a whole lot more time and a whole lot more frequent. So in the high school, it'll be ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade.
I mean, we're looking at three to five days of testing, correct?
Twice.
Twice.
So six to ten days for every grade level, nine, ten, and eleven. One in March, one in June.
Three to five days of testing with no tangible benefit.
The best we've heard is that possibly your performance on the Park exam would guarantee you access into a credit-bearing course at the college level. Personally, I don't feel that's going to cut it in terms of an incentive, so this is going to be a challenge for our students and for our teachers. It's, again, it's a foggy picture, so we stay focused on the more local assessment. It's going to be tough, and all districts across Illinois, and certainly all the Park states, are concerned about it.
Is that part of the conversation of how are we going to get kids to perform? Because a sixteen-year-old boy does not care what the state mandates.
Right. Is that part of which conversation? Sorry.
Is the fact that a sixteen-year-old boy doesn't care what Springfield has to say about his test-taking, is that part of the conversation among the folks in your business?
Oh, absolutely. And actually, on Friday, I'll join the Chicago-area Directors of Curriculum Assessment. It's CADCA. And people who do jobs similar to mine across a huge area of the state, the northern part of the state, come together, and everyone is watching and waiting. And honestly, people, you know, are hoping that the amount of testing is reduced. The other issue that is presenting itself is that districts will have the option to purchase the more formative assessment earlier in the year. That's the real good stuff. That's the stuff that you can get the results and actually use immediately to inform instruction. March is okay. June is pretty much useless, you know, unless you're planning for the future year, which in the high school system, when kids change teachers, that's really difficult. So the big question mark is, how are we going to get students to buy into these exams? And many people are hoping that what Park and Smarter Balanced and the other states are setting out to do will change before it actually happens. But we are on schedule to pilot some assessments in the spring. All districts were given the opportunity, including Lake Forest High School, and all of my colleagues have taken advantage of that opportunity and signed up. But again, none of us would be surprised if the email came tomorrow that said there's been a delay. Right now, twenty-five percent of the districts in Illinois have the technology infrastructure to administer these tests. What about the other seventy-five percent? We have the technology infrastructure, but is this something that's really sustainable? Again, local assessments, stay focused on what matters.
Is there any ability that you know of at this point for parents to opt their students out of this testing?
The Park testing, no. In the same way that they cannot opt out of the PSAE. The PSAE is required for graduation from high school in Illinois.
And what constitutes taking the test? Is that?
Showing up.
Showing up and putting your name on the paper?
Or in the case of Park, it will be sitting in front of the computer and clicking. So, I mean, Park will require some data entries, some text, whereas currently the PSAE doesn't. It's all bubbles, so Park might be a little bit more difficult for kids to make designs, but ultimately, that student has control over what that result looks like, that individual student.
I proctored these tests, and I've watched kids come in any number of times, and if they do show up, a number of them, the kids that do, many of the kids that take the test are motivated by not wanting to make their school look bad. But adolescent kids very often are just not all that motivated by.
Anything.
Any, anything related to that.
Right.
And the student does not look bad. The school looks like the school has failed, but in fact, with an assessment like this, when there's not some benefit that the student perceives from it, smart kids figure these things out. And they act often, too often unfortunately, accordingly. And, you know, that's something that we're all going to wind up probably seeing when the results come back.
I would agree.
Do you have a question? No? No? I think you're done now. Thank you. Okay, so we can move on to board committee reports. The Board Education Committee, Mrs. Snoblen?
Well, the Education Committee met yesterday, and my report now is very easy because I have nothing I could possibly say that you haven't already just heard. Our topics were the assessment report, which Lauren ran through with us. We talked about, we got an update from Barry on the scheduling initiative, and also an update from Barry on the status of the research into one-to-one computing or one-to-one learning. I want to emphasize that the role of the Education Committee in all of these things is to provide, to receive updates and information from our administrators and to provide feedback that represents our perspectives as community members and board members. So we get a lot of value in hearing these updates so that we have a full understanding of what's coming down the path. The board members on the committee serve, in a sense, to vet ideas before they come to the full board. And then the administrators have the benefit of, again, getting our feedback as community members as well as board members. So we have heard all of this interesting material twice now in two days. So our next meeting is scheduled for February. I forgot my notes, and so I can't tell you the exact date, but it's, I believe, the first Wednesday in February. Thanks.
Thank you. Board Finance and Operations Committee, Mr. Black.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board Finance and Operations Committee met on November 6th for almost two hours. The main items on the agenda were the tentative levy, and I'm sure everyone remembers it was an extensive presentation on that last meeting, and it's on the approval agenda for tonight, so I won't spend too much time there, other than to say the new community members had a good opportunity to go through the whole process. I see one of them is here tonight, Mr. Talkey. I thank you for being here, and I thank you for your volunteerism on the Finance and Operations Committee. Secondly, the committee received the audit report from our external auditors, and I won't spend a lot of time with that tonight because we very much want the external auditors to present their report to the whole board and give the whole board the opportunity to ask them questions, and they could not make it tonight, so that is currently scheduled for our January meeting. Suffice it to say, though, that the district received a clean audit. The committee had the opportunity to meet with the auditors in private without any administrative staff present, and I think it's fair to say that the auditors had a very complimentary opinion of the district's work and the level of cooperation that exists between the district's staff and the external audit team, the outside audit team. So fellow board members, you can look forward to receiving their detailed report next month and have the opportunity to ask them whatever questions you may think are appropriate based on that report. We also did a brief facility update, nothing of major status there to report, in my opinion. Unfortunately, Mr. Wallace has been ill, as I think everybody here probably knows, and we have not yet scheduled what we would hope to be a committee meeting in January. Jen, I'll turn to you and see if maybe we can get that moving along. We do have a regular quarterly committee meeting scheduled for February 26th, so those of you who might be interested can put that on your calendar, but we would also hope to have a meeting in January. John and Ted, I don't know if you have anything to add? Feel free to do so, please.
No, I'm fine. I think you did a nice job recapping.
Dale, I give you the opportunity to add as well, if you'd like.
There's nothing I can add to all these illustrious presentations. These are some of the most exciting, about fifteen years of hanging around the high school, these are some of the most exciting things I have heard. I'm just blown away with the information that's coming out, ideas that are presented, data collected, that being programmed. It sounds like it's a fantastic thing to develop.
Thank you. I interrupt you only to say, if you'd like to make more comments, you're welcome to, but if you'd step up to the podium, the people who view this on television will get the opportunity to hear you. If you don't, they won't, so.
I'm fine. I'll do it, but thank you.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Leads us to liaison reports, and I believe Mr. Schreiber has an update from Ed Redd regarding the pension reform.
Yes, and I just need to find where I buried that. The crux of the update is, there it is. Ed Redd keeps us pretty busy, but it's a great organization. So I think the primary update that most of us heard about is that they have reached a pension agreement, at least the legislator has, and the governor's signed it. Now, there's a question about how long it takes before it gets through the court system and actually does take effect. But some interesting takeaways from what has been approved. One of the key things that I think we were monitoring as a district was what the potential implications would be for a cost shift. And a cost shift was not part of the legislation that was approved, number one. But number two, part of the reason, and Jen, keep me honest on this, but part of the reason that it was difficult to include the cost shift in the legislation initially was because it costs six to seven percent of the total salaries. And so what this new legislation provides for is closer to two percent. So what that means is, when they were talking about shifting the costs to the local districts, taking on six to seven percent at a rate of roughly half percent per year, it would take, you know, so whatever that adds up, fourteen years, we already pay half percent, apparently, fourteen years to shift that entire cost. Because they didn't include, because they changed it to be two percent, down for seven percent, approaching now the cost shift separately will be a lot easier, meaning it would be really difficult to put six to seven percent, whatever the schedule would be, on the districts. But the legislator's looking at a total of two percent at a half percent a year is much more digestible, and the Ed Redd organization expects that they will start to move on some legislation for that in the January timeframe. So that gives us a little bit more predictability in what some of our potential exposure would be. And, oh, I guess just from a highlight perspective, if you didn't read about it, the savings total one-hundred-and-sixty billion over the next thirty years, and that's potentially one-point-five billion in annual savings. And the way the funding's structured is they're changing the annual contribution calculation. Well, that's a little bit confusing. Let me, the nugget that made sense to me was they're going to be diverting revenue from expiring bonds into the pension fund versus the general revenue fund. And so that's part of how they're structuring the funding for these savings. So I think the bottom line is that they finally reached an agreement. Hopefully, it gets through the courts very quickly, and the cost shift should not be as intimidating as maybe we expected it could be. So that's the latest.
Thank you. We have arrived at the action items. The first item on the list tonight is adoption of the 2013 tax levy. Mr. Simic, or Ms. Hermes?
Thank you, Mr. Bergner, and I will defer to Ms. Hermes on this. Thank you, Mr. Burgner, and I will defer to Ms. Hermes on this in Mr. Alvis's absence.
Happy to cover some of the highlights, but please don't ask me detailed questions because I lost power about thirty seconds towards the end of Lauren's presentation. So there's a limit of technology. But presented to you is the, we're asking for final approval on our tax levy. As you know, by law, we are required to pass that before the, the last Tuesday in December. You did receive a tentative levy in November, which has to be twenty days before the final levy, just to make it, you know, interesting to keep you on task. What we are looking for, we did do an estimate based at that time, we shared that and went through it in detail at the Finance Committee, we're estimating a reduction probably in our EAV, so our estimated assessed values of approximately three percent. We did come at that figure after consultation with some of our township assessors, information that we're hearing from, from peers in our industry. In addition, the second component of that, of course, is we are under a tax cap, which means we are limited in, in our extension growth by either CPI or five percent, whichever is less. The tax cap that is applicable to this particular year is one point seven percent. In addition to that, we do get the new growth factor. In our initial calculation in November, we calculate the new growth to be approximately nine million in assessed value, how, which would result in an overall tax increase of two point oh three percent on the extension. However, because there still are some unknowns, those variables aren't known until actually you accept your, your final levy, we do add a little bit of cushion in, in case that we are off in our new construction estimate. So the final levy before the board tonight, one point seven CPI, we have twenty-one and some change in, for new construction, twenty-one million and change in for new construction, which result in an overall extension increase of two point oh three percent, or two point five zero percent.
Mr. President, I should have also mentioned, I, I don't think I did, that the Finance and Operations Committee did recommend to the full board that the, the tax levy be accepted.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mrs. Hermes or anybody else?
I, I had a couple of questions, Jen. At the last Finance Committee meeting, I shared with the board, I don't know if you were there actually, Jen, but I shared with the board a, a set of questions that I put together based on reviewing some of the data about our spend per student and where we, where we fall in the, in the state. And it just started to raise some questions for me. One of the questions, and, and it also raised the question from the perspective of how, how much we spend relative to some of the other local districts. And one of the questions that I, I thought was, you could help me with is, what's the estimated range of, of revenue that we're expecting from this levy? And, and is it, is it baked in? Have we planned for some of that, that revenue in terms of some of these initiatives or cost shifts, things like I was just talking about from, from Ed Red?
Yes. If you, if you look at the actual, the levy, the extension amount that we have, we're gonna, which levy is basically your ask, this is what you are asking for. You will receive either what the maximum is by tax cap or whatever you ask for, whichever is, is less. So since we've overshot it, we will be brought down, we will not get the full thirty-four million and change, but something underneath that. The second part of your question, and this is what I, and I think we're looking at for that January meeting, is really a detailed walk through our five-year projection. What are the fundamental principles that we have built into that five-year? Do we have the half percent cost shift in there? Yes, absolutely. I'm, I'm with you, I'm with Ed Red, that is not going away. So we've not, we've not wavered from that. We have utilized in our five-year, and it's the same thing for what you will see in January, capitalizing on the maximum tax rate. Now certainly those are assumptions, as you know, we did convert to a commercial product this year versus an in-house, which we will be able to make some of those scenarios on the fly. What if we were to reduce our, our extension? What does that, what does that mean? What does that look like? So we will be able to run some of those scenarios hopefully live in January.
Roughly, what would you expect would be a high and low end of the range of revenue that would be generating?
I could tell you the exact, exact number that we expected if I actually still had power, but refer you to the November board packet, we reproduced two sheets. One says, this is what we expected to produce. This is, this is our best guess based on the data that we have available and in what we know on historical trends.
I think it was like six hundred K, does that sound right?
I think that's a two point oh three percent. Yeah, I think that's the two point oh three percent, is it not?
Right.
Growth in revenues, which on the base is somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars, just going from memory.
And then the other question that it made me think about was, how does, for instance, if we didn't take the max, what would be the implications to our ten percent reserve policy?
When we bring up the projection models, and we answered a very similar question for the D sixty-seven Finance Committee this morning, but you will see, and you can pick your number, if it's two hundred thousand dollars, let's say, less than, than the maximum extension, you know, in theory you could say, okay, it's two hundred thousand a year times, times five, that gets you close, but it really doesn't cover the compounding and whatnot. So you'll have to look, when we pull up that five-year and go through it in detail, you will see, okay, if it is two hundred thousand less or three hundred thousand less, we actually show on the screen a percent of, a percent of fund balance of operating expense. So you can see, what does that do to our target ten percent? You know, where are we relative to that?
Our, our target minimum ten percent, just throw that out there. And as, as Jen commented, the, the effect is not just a single year effect unless you go to the voters and ask for an operating referendum to increase the tax rate. That, that reduction compounds over future years because you've lowered the prior year's revenue base for each of those years, again, unless you seek a referendum to, to increase it. But as we said at the meeting, these are all decisions that we need to think long and hard about here as we face the future, particularly in an environment of decreasing enrollment. Now that's offset by certain things and, and the likelihood of increased sharing in the TRS system plan and, and these kinds of things, but questions we definitely want to address going forward. It's not, from my perspective at least, it's certainly not a slam dunk as to which way we ought to go.
I think, again, part of how I got to this line of questioning is to understand the delta between how much we're spending with a enrollment of roughly seventeen hundred students and what's being spent at other nearby districts with about the same enrollment and understanding how we decide when this, when we ask for these, these taxes, or we look at fees, or we look at referendums, how we're, how we're stacking up what, when we're already spending quite a bit per student, you know, how we are going through the process of determining when we ask for money and how we determine what programs we add and what programs that we're cutting in the supporting administrative resources that go along with that. So it sounds like the, as I'm learning about the process, that we still have opportunities to influence some of these budget decisions. So thanks for, thanks for your report.
Again, just a final comment, as we talked about in the meeting, we've been catching up on our reserve balance since certainly the year that ended in oh nine and we have just reattained our minimum. So it would have been very difficult for us to have foregone the tax increases that we could enact or, or could take from, from the taxpayers and still, still have a shot at, you know, achieving our, our fund balance minimum up until now. Now we, we've gotten there and we can at least begin to look at it and we have to balance the projections about what we might spend in, in, in normal course of business activity and what we might, might want to spend on things like were presented tonight, the International Black Lawrence Program, a huge commitment, the, the one-on-one computing initiative, which I really would ask that we find a better name for, something like digitizing curriculum and learning or something of that nature because it's not just the one-to-one, it's not that simplistic. But anyhow, you, you get the picture. We're now at a, at a juncture, I'd suggest, where we can begin to afford to make these kinds of trade-offs and decisions and, and do so in a, you know, a transparent and, and public way.
Thank you.
I, I just want to add that I think the, certainly the spirit of the questioning from Mr. Schreiber is, to my way of thinking anyway, right on target, that there, there can be a perception developed that we seek the maximum because we can and, and we need to have better justification for the, the dollars that we're seeking from our, our taxpaying community than just because we can, just like anything else we do. And when you do line up the, the level of spend in aggregate, it, it's a big number and when you set it against the rankings of the school versus the peers that we have that are achieving higher rankings for less money, at least on the surface, it would appear that there's more bang for the buck in other places and so to ask why is, is a valid and fair question. I think it also begs the, the question of what goes into those numbers. We've got a fifty-four million dollar referendum that is baked into ours, it's four point six million dollars a year of debt and interest repayment that's associated with the referendum that was wildly supported by the community and represents twenty-five hundred dollars per student of the twenty-two thousand that we see in the newspapers all the time, I think. If, if that's not the case, I'd, I'd love to learn that as well. But I think the, the, the line of questioning is, is on target and, and appropriate and I hope we can, we can drill into this further in the next couple of months before the, the tax bills actually are set and, and go out. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? So we need a motion to adopt the two thousand and thirteen tax levy.
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District one fifteen Board of Education adopt the two thousand and thirteen tax levy as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? If not, may I please have a roll call?
Mrs. Snowblin?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. Motion is carried. Next we move on to the approval of the mission, vision, goals contracts. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Burgner, and I'd like to turn to Mr. Edson for an introduction and overview of the process that has led us to today.
Thank you, Mike. This actually was a process that you had planned on initiating early in your first year here, which was to look at, I, I could label this a strategic management system that was employed by the school district, moving from mission, to vision, to values, to goals, to objectives, to action plans, that whole spectrum that you could say would be a strategic management system. And was felt that it would be useful to engage someone from outside the organization to help the board deal with those, the process of, of improving that and more importantly involving the community in it. So the challenges that we faced in the beginning was, do we do this as a board by ourselves or do we recognize that we have a elementary school district that's facing the same, the same issue? And so does one organization do this or do it separately or do we, do we do it in conjunction with the elementary school district? And that led to, if we do it with the elementary school district, do we engage one organization or do we each have our own organizations? We ended up, I think, wanting to do this with one organization and both school districts would do it side by side but do it as a separate operation. Couple of other things we came up with was common language, everyone had a different definition for strategy, for mission, for vision, for values, so we had to work through some of that. And then there were very different purposes. I think at District sixty-seven, I can't really speak for them, but they felt they didn't have a good handle on what their mission was at the school district. We felt that we did. Our issue was that we didn't feel the mission was really aligned with a lot of the activities that was taking, were taking place in the school district or there wasn't a clear alignment, a clear connection between the mission and the things that we were investing and funding. And last, we wanted to be sure that whatever we did, we had great community input up front and after we, we involved, we, we rolled it out. So those are the things we kind of wrestle with. The process were, was fairly simple. We identified seven different organizations that we interviewed, asked them to give us proposals. We got a proposal for all of them, or at least there were proposals submitted by all of them, some just to District sixty-seven, some just to our district and several gave us a proposal covering both districts. What we learned in the process was that while each of them were very capable, they were capable in different areas. In the end, the organization we selected was sort of more aligned with what we were looking for, which is to focus in on the front end of this process, the part that the board owns, which was the mission, vision and goals. This is sort of the board's role to set the mission, vision and goals. And less on what some of the other organizations were real good at was rolling those into action plans, which are more sort of implementation issues that the administration better focused on. So while they're all great organizations, we, we selected the transformation team represented here tonight. Shani, glad to have you here with us. And we have a proposal in front of you to engage your organization to help us as a board and a community further clarify what, what it is we're doing here.
And as I understand it, Shani, you've got some things you'd like to share with us in the presentation, briefly?
Very briefly. So thank you very much for inviting me here tonight. I've spent quite a bit of time with some members of the board talking through this. So what I'd like to do in this time together is just give you an overview very quickly of the objectives, the approach, the timeline for the work that we're going to do, address any questions or concerns that you might have, and also just give you an opportunity to get to know me because this process is a very highly engaged process, so I will be working closely with the board over the next few months. So I thought you might want to know who you're kind of getting involved with here. So let me tell you a little bit about why I'm here. The first is that I'm a proud product of public education, I'm in one of those white states with no Confucius, West Virginia, but I've been a Chicago resident now, it's my adopted city of record. I have a joint MBA and a master's in education and I've been looking for a way to make that relevant for some time. My parents are very proud, they're finally seeing how I'm putting that to good use. The work that the transformation team does is really dedicated to helping leaders and organizations accomplish big goals. We're not interested in the trivial, we're really interested in the significant. As I've talked to all of you, I've gotten a sense that what Lake Forest is up to is something big, so we'd like to be involved. And the way that we do consulting is very aligned with a lot of the conversation that we're hearing, which is, we're about creating conditions for exploration and meaning-making together as opposed to, I do not have an answer for what the vision or the mission or the strategy should be for this district, but I'm pretty good at putting conditions in place where you can have that conversation with the community, with the administrators, with the staff and figure it out. So that's kind of what I'm up to. I'd say the downside of me is that I don't live on the North Shore, but I will be staying in a hotel nearby since I start seven AM interviews again tomorrow. So the project that we're doing, here are the objectives. We really want to create a context in which all of you can explore the possibilities for what you can create together on behalf of students over the next decade, five years, seven years, ten years, kind of where are we going? And land on an inspiring vision and a high-level strategic plan, so it's not enough to have an outcome in mind, it's very important that you see the stages for how you will get there. From what I understand and from what I've heard tonight, there is no shortage of good ideas in this district and the question is what, when, in what order and why? And that's what this discussion will really result in, is that kind of container for all of that good work. And we want to use this process as a way to continue to strengthen relationships among all of the players here. Doesn't sound like it's repair that's needed, but there's, these kinds of conversations can really bring people together so that where you land is a very shared view of where we're headed, what it's going to take to get there and what you need from everyone here. The framework that's really guiding my work and that we've used with a lot of organizations is about five things that you need in order to get from where you are today to some big new outcome. And it really starts with a shared reality. So how do we understand where we are, what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are, what's true for us today, some of the data that you were just looking at? Where do we want to get to? What's that important outcome that we're all striving for, that we're committed to? What's a set of milestones that over time represent that progress, that, that kind of evolution for us? The integrated initiatives is, once we decide where we're headed, obviously work is going to be required to get us there, what, in what order? That's what that is really referring to. And finally, a process by which everyone can be engaged in this conversation so that we're not coming up with a secret answer and then landing it on people, but we're actually building that answer together through an engagement process. So that's what you'll see reflected in So that's what you'll see reflected in how we're going to do the work. The project approach really has five phases, and we're starting kind of right away. The first is about exploration, really gathering perspectives, speaking with all of you, speaking with members of the other boards as we're kind of talking about doing these processes simultaneously. So we will run independent processes for District 67 and District 115 simultaneously, and then we will bring them together. So we will have an exploration process, then we'll do some design around, how can we create a day-long retreat that will produce really clarity on the vision? We'll have that day-long working session, which I'll facilitate. And then from that, we will produce a vision, clarified mission as needed, and really the elements of a strategic plan. When we've got both districts done, we'll sort of look at those side by side and say, is there an opportunity here for an integrated vision that would stand over both? Or is it, they're so different, we can't do that? And we'll let you decide that. And then from that phase, we will enter into kind of high-level community engagement. So the idea is that the superintendent and many of you will go into the community, host conversations to say, here's what we're thinking about. How do you respond to it? Let's kind of engage on this. We will capture sort of what people are thinking, what the major reactions are, and from that we will refine it and land on kind of what you see as the final vision and high-level strategic plan. So I'll come back to the board at the, probably mid to late March, and say, this is where we've landed, and we'll align the board on sort of what that vision is. So it's a four-month process that will basically commence right away pending your kind of approval of it. Are there any questions you'd like me to answer?
Yeah, a couple of questions. And I enjoyed being, was that the first interview that you?
You were number two.
I was number two. So you had practiced, okay. I enjoyed that. A couple of questions. Is this an engagement that is, it's a fixed fee where there's some sort of deliverable at the end in acceptance criteria for us to say, yeah, this hits the mark, or no, it doesn't, and you need to keep working on it? Can you talk a little, or is there some sort of hourly rate card, if you will, that continues to keep the clock rolling? Can you just talk about the acceptance criteria?
That's a terrific question, Dave. This is a fixed-fee project. My commitment is, you get the results that you want or I keep working. That's the risk that my firm kind of assumes. So we've mapped out a set of deliverables, including a vision that you're all happy with and an intensive engagement process. And if it takes longer than this, which sometimes it does, then I'll just keep working until we're done.
Thank you. And then the other question was, can you talk about where, if not where, if there's confidentiality? Can you talk about how this has been effective with other similar organizations that you've worked with?
Sure. I think the most relevant example that I can't give because it's in the public domain is, I did a year-long effort with the University of California's Central Administrative Office. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the UC system, but there are 10 universities that are under the umbrella of the president's office. And several years ago, this was 2008, the chairman of that board said, you know, we spend $400 million on this administrative cost center every year. We don't know what they're there to do. Can someone help us kind of create a vision and then right-size the organization, slightly different focus of the work we were doing there? And so the firm that I worked at at the time was engaged, and I was the project leader on it. And what we discovered is that unfortunately, there was a lot of dissatisfaction among the system in terms of what this office was there to do, which was the bad news part. But the good news part was, we then spent the next nine months after we did our diagnostic, mobilizing the people inside the organization to kind of reclaim their destiny, like, this is your future, you know, this is what value creation looks like in this university system. You're going to have to reorganize yourselves. You're going to have to kind of mobilize around this new vision. Lot of resistance. People had worked there for kind of their whole lives, had a lot committed in what they already were. So that reinvention process was very difficult. But that was actually kind of what got me doing work that looks like this, was when people kind of take control of sort of a future that's different from the past, how powerful that moment is for them and what they can create is kind of what I'm inspired by. So I would say it's probably one of the most, it was the longest project I've ever done. So that was an exciting one that way.
Thanks.
It's very important to recognize that the two districts don't have the same constituencies or stakeholders. While there is overlap, District 115 serves Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and unincorporated Knollwood. How do you go about ensuring that you have representative or meaningful stakeholders from the appropriate communities as you're doing this? You know, I know there is a community outreach portion of this. How do we make sure that all of the areas of the appropriate communities are being represented?
The part that I could do was to suggest that we design these processes as sort of parallel but independent, so that each had kind of, was whole in and of itself. Because that way, all the constituents will feel like, I wasn't additive to somebody else's process, I had my own. What I'm reliant upon the board and the administration for is to make sure that the right people are invited. And so that when we get particularly to the outreach phase, that you're helping make sure that all of the right people are convened, and then I can sort of design the conversation so everyone feels heard.
One of the things that wasn't as clear as I would have liked in your proposal was the plan for community outreach and input. And so if you could comment a little bit about that and...
Some of it is because I think that there is a creative process that we'll go through to sort of figure out what's perfect. But to give you just a little bit of a flavor for what's a straw model, you know, we often will conduct a series of brown bag lunch kind of feeling things, so more casual than the current environment, where you say, you know, maximum capacity is 40 people. Come have lunch with a board member and the superintendent and the principal to talk about kind of the vision. We put it up on the wall, we sort of talk about it. I'd have some prompting questions that we would ask and really create a place where people can really talk and it's not too formal. And the important thing about my role is that there is to really do a lot of capture so that all of that qualitative data that gets created in a conversation like that doesn't get lost. But that ultimately, when we finish the vision and the plan, the people in the community would feel like, yes, I contributed that. I can see my words in where you've actually gone because that's what creates trust, I think, between the product and the process. Does that make it any more clear?
Yeah. You know, our only experience here, in this district at least, goes back a dozen years ago, I believe, or thereabouts. And I would say it had mixed results. I see Ann shaking her head. I don't know how you want to describe that. It was a very formalized approach. We created seven, I believe, action teams, and then we had a committee on top of that. We had, I don't know, community involvement to the tune of 300 people or thereabouts, formally, and more than that informally. And it suffered under the weight of that bureaucracy, if I can put it to you that way.
Yes.
But I am very interested in providing the community with as much opportunity as those stakeholders want to provide meaningful input. So I don't know if you're talking about one lunch for 40 people or...
No, I think it would be multiples. But that's where it would be hard for me in the proposal process to really sort of, I don't want to use some generic idea of what's going to work. I really want to work with you to kind of say, hey, here's what I think, you know, let's have seven sessions, and they look like this, and this is how we'll do it, and then you'll tell me, yeah, I don't think that's going to work because this is what we've done in the past, and here's why, and this is what's going to be more right for our community. And I think that together, there's a lot of smart people in the room. I think we can figure out how to engage people in a way that feels really genuine and actually gets the engagement you want, not just some machine process.
Yeah, I just want to press on you how important that is. You know, I think we very much want to be genuine, we want to be transparent, and we very much want to dialogue as opposed to sort of one-way messaging, one way or the other, between ourselves and the community as we go through this process. So thank you.
And Dick referred to the last strategic planning process that we did in this district, and that was before I was on the board, but I chaired one of those seven committees. And to my everlasting shame slash amusement, the product of my committee was deemed by the newspaper to be gobbledygook. And I, in hindsight, understand exactly why it was perceived that way and why our product was in fact gobbledygook. And that brings me to something I wanted to say about your proposal itself. It appeals to me very much, and I think it bodes well for our product that we're going to come up with because it's written in plain language and it doesn't get bogged down in jargon of the field. It's very easy to use language that you in the field, in the education field, may be familiar with, but that doesn't really resonate with the general public. So, you know, any person could read your proposal and understand exactly what it is you're talking about. And I think that makes me hopeful for whatever we're going to produce through this process.
Thank you. That's one of the nicest things anyone's ever said to me.
I'm sorry for that. I have a question that's somewhat in follow-up to Nikki's but a little bit different. Nikki's first. I can't even come close to being as kind as she just was. How does I try? One of your slides spoke to the strengthening the relationship among Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood. And then I think maybe in this slide or previous, you talk about at the end of Phase One, potentially working to decide whether it's a one-integrated vision that encompasses both districts or to determine that two separate visions are required. And I know, and this might be better asked of Mike or Monty, but any of you jump in, how do you, this is not about reaching out to the community members necessarily, because I think you've addressed that, but my understanding is that Lake Bluff, District 65, has gone through a variation on this theme fairly recently and developed their own long-term strategic plan. And they do represent, the village does represent about 31% of our student population in the high school. So how do you anticipate reconciling differences that the vision developed in District 67, for example, has with District 65 to ensure that, to the extent possible, kids coming in from both feeder schools are doing so on equal footing when they get into the high school?
Mike, do you want to? Well, I would say the first thing you start is just being sort of curious and humble about, well, start with what they have and sort of, you know, let's let their thinking inform our process. Doesn't mean it's going to change our answer, but just being very conscious and curious about what those things are and bringing them in sort of proactively eliminates a lot of that sort of false reconciliation at the back end of it. Now, you know, the way that I feel that that reconciliation at the end of January will go is that, you know, oftentimes, because I'm in both conversations, because Mike will be in both conversations, you kind of, you feel whether they're landing in the same basic place and whether what people meant, even if they use different vernacular to represent it, means basically the same thing. And I think the same will be true with kind of what we see with District 65. And maybe that we want to interview a few people from there to kind of bring them into the process as well. That's kind of the process answer to your question. The superintendent may have a more kind of informed version, knowing more about District 65.
I know we had a lot of discussions about this in the whole selection process, and the answer, this is kind of like a rope-a-dope thing. We're going to have to punch it out. And we're going to get into it and figure out whether there's some similarities or not. We couldn't answer that question upfront. And that's why it was designed to have two parallel processes and at the end, make that decision, Todd.
And the question isn't so much, what differences do you expect? I know that the process has to be followed to determine what those differences are. The question is, what happens when you determine that there are differences? And how do you reconcile? How do you draw a 31% contributor to our student population into the discussion? And not just at the community level, but at the administration and board level of that district to make sure that there is consistency without acquiescing to their existing plan?
I think I'm going to fall right about in line where Monty was, is that it's a work in progress, is that you get into it and then you feel your way through this. One of the things that we encountered pretty early on in the process, it was a real learning process for the new board member from 67 that was part of the group that was in the selection committee, is that the two districts, 67 and 115, are really in different places, and that's where the complexity of shared service comes in. And the degree to which 65 winds up playing a role in our process, that's, we did not play a role in their process, for example. And while it's not appropriate for them to play a role in 67's, it certainly is in 115. But the degree in how we manage that, or if we manage that, if that's just not a place where we're able to go, I think that's something that we don't know right now. And we've got developing relationships with 65 that we didn't have a year ago, and we are going to have to explore that.
I'm familiar with and participating in some of those developing relationships, and I'm encouraged by the level of outreach that our peers on the Lake Bluff board have had to kind of take down some barriers that have gone up over the last couple of years. I do just want to emphasize that there will be, and we experienced this after last month's meeting when the new website was, was that just last month? When the new website went live? And some of the terminology that exists within the various pages and the entry point. And I look at it and I see more acknowledgement of the other communities that feed into the high school than there's ever been before. But there are members, vocal members of the community in Lake Bluff who see nothing but the words "Lake Forest Schools" and say, where's, how come that's not "Lake Bluff Schools"? And maybe I'm being snotty and maybe I'm just frustrated by it, but my answer is that geographically and by name, that's exactly what they are, "Lake Forest Schools," but it by no means is intended to imply that you're being excluded from any of this. And I just want to encourage you to be sensitive to that as you move through this, that there are eyes on it in the village. And it's better to be upfront about it than try to react to it later.
Thank you for the guidance.
I have a autobiographical question, if you don't mind. We spoke earlier about Lauren, did a number of times, about growth mindset and Carol Dweck's work. And your biography is similar to that. I think there's some connection that you mentioned in one of our interviews that you felt like, I want to find the degree to which you could identify with that growth mindset thing that she was discussing.
So one of the reasons that this work is so meaningful to me is that, as I said, I'm from that small white state, West Virginia. And in the public education system, you know, I was in a very below-average public school that's probably going to be closed soon due to population declines in the area I'm from. And, you know, considered sort of the average path of many students around. But there was actually a nonprofit organization that was focused on the promotion of education to mountain cultures, and they picked West Virginia as one of their focus areas. They invited me to a weekend symposium at a local college, and as part of that, offered me the opportunity to do their summer program. The focus of the summer program was to write a 100-page autobiographical thesis about yourself. Who knew you had that much to say in the 11th grade? And they took us on a college tour. So they piled 12 of us in a van, drove us to New England, and kind of said, here's Drew, here's Williamson, here's Columbia, here's Harvard, and said, any of you could go there. So it doesn't matter where you came from, you're actually a geographic minority, and that's a gift, which I didn't realize at the time. And that set me on a completely different path. So I went to Harvard, you know, that's how I am in front of you today, no doubt. And so I'm so grateful for those kinds of opportunities and what people believing in the potential of students can do for them. And I know what education can do and how it can change the path of your life. So that's why I'm so committed to doing work like this. Is that the story that you meant, Mike?
That's exactly it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Just one quick question.
Inches from a clean getaway.
Inches from a clean ghetto.
And I'm glad we didn't get the 100-page version, your autobiography. But your professional fees, they're pretty straightforward, you know, with both districts participating. You know, we get a reduced rate.
Yep.
What would happen if one of the districts rescinded the agreement? Would the other district then be responsible for the full amount, or the larger amount, or we just go with what we started? I don't assume either district would pull out, because there's one person here that can control that.
Right, right. I think if one of the districts pulled out, then the higher fee would apply to the district that was participating, because the lower fees reflect the efficiencies that can be, you know, created by doing both simultaneously. But we could revisit that if that became the case. Is that a clear answer to your question?
First of all, yes.
Okay.
Just a sort of follow-up question about the fees. So I noticed that the balance of the fees, half's due at the contract signing, half's due at the end of January. The engagement doesn't end until March slash when we accept the final deliverable. Is there any openness consideration to rebalancing how that's structured?
Yes, we could, if you want to sort of graduate the end, that would be fine.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Need a motion to approve the mission-vision-goals contract.
I like that motion. I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the mission-vision-goals contract.
Second.
If there are no other questions or comments, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Snobland?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Burgen?
Aye. Motion is carried. Last on the action items list is approval of the Human Resources Report, which was part of the board packet. If there's anything beyond that to share, I'm looking at Mr. Hendrickson. No? Then if there are any questions or comments about the Human Resources Report? If not, may I have a motion to approve it?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve, reading the wrong one, I move the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mrs. Snobland?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Burgen?
Aye. Motion is carried. That brings us to the consent agenda. If there are any items on the consent agenda that a member would like to have removed for separate discussion, please speak now. If not, the consent agenda consists of the approval of the Allied Flex carryover, approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statement for November 2013, minutes of a special meeting from November 14, 2013, minutes of a regular meeting on November 5, 2013, minutes of an executive session on November 5, 2013, and disposal of audio recordings from March 13, 2012. May I have a motion to approve?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda as previously stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mrs. Snobland?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Burgen?
Aye. Motion is carried. There were three FOIA requests during the month of November, all of them from Mrs. Nancy Thorne. Announcements include this Thursday, the 12th, the Sophomore Parents Seminar, 7:00 PM, Raymond Moore Auditorium. Friday, the 13th, the Sophomore Parents Seminar recap at 9:00 AM. Sunday, December 15th, the Holiday Concert and Spaghetti Dinner. Would you like to say anything about that, Nikki? I know this is an annual favorite.
It's a don't-miss opportunity to hear our music students at their very best. Perhaps there are still tickets available. You could find out online. It's just a fabulous event, even though it's many years now since I've had a student involved. I would not miss it for the world. And the spaghetti's even improved over the years.
It is a great event. From December 23 through January 5, will be winter break, with school reopening on Monday, January 6. On Friday, January 10, the freshman parent meeting at 10:00 AM in Raymond Moore Auditorium. And on Tuesday, January 14, this board will meet again right here at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None.